So I know that we have a couple of honorings to do here. And I know that one came out of Education Committee. And another one was from Councilman Mike Carlo and a couple other members. But I know that Mr. Saltes is online, so he's not here to be with us in person. But we'll start with Education Committee if you want to start there. Since this is educator, and I want to make sure that we go through that process. And also, I know that the honoree is an individual, or I'm sorry, constituent of Eagle Nest. So but we're, yeah, Mr. Randall. So go ahead, Councilman, if you want to, I'm sorry, Vice Chair, if you want to start the honoring.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Gerald Canoyer Jr. I'm the Vice Chairman for the Education Committee. And currently respectfully request Mr. Dustin Randall to come up here. If you would, sir, please kindly come up here. We have a, we have a few things for you. Number one, being a certificate of appreciation. And number two, being a satin tribal emblem star quilt for you as well. And before we begin, I'll begin by wrapping in the star quilt, sir. That's very commendable action. Before, before I read his certificate of appreciation, I'd like to go on here and let you all know what he did. So bear with me. On May 9th, 2022, Crazy Horse School bus driver Dustin Randall was making his afternoon route to the Parma Lee area. He had dropped a 17-year-old male student off at the residence approximately two miles north of Norris, South Dakota, and proceeded on his route towards Parma Lee. On his way back to Ombly after he had delivered all the students to their homes, there were several vehicles in front of him, and he noticed they had passed a person on the side of the road that appeared to be in distress. As Mr. Randall got closer to that person, he discovered it was the 17-year-old male student he dropped off approximately 45 minutes earlier. The student was holding his arm, and he did not look in very good condition. Mr. Randall stopped his bus, checked the student, and discovered the male was bleeding profusely from his forearm. Mr. Randall applied his first aid skills by applying a tourniquet to the young man's arm and called for medical assistance. All while waiting for his ambulance to arrive at the scene, Mr. Randall kept the student calm and continued to apply his first aid skills to keep the student from passing out or perhaps worse. While waiting for the ambulance, several cars had all driven by without stopping and offering assistance. The ambulance arrived over an hour later and transported the young man to the Rosebud Indian Health Service Hospital, where the doctors had to perform life-saving measures as the young man had stopped breathing at one point. Rosebud Indian Health Service Hospital then lifelighted the young man to Monument Health in Rapid City where he underwent emergency surgery late that night. The surgeons at Monument Health indicated that the bus driver who assisted the young man had saved his life by applying the first aid skills correctly. The young man was in the hospital for several days and is now home and doing okay. What caused this incident was when the young man walked into his house about half mile off the highway. The house was locked, and nobody was home, and he broke a window to crawl into the house. During the breaking, a piece of glass had cut a main artery in his arm. The student then walked up to the highway, hoping a car would stop to help him. No cars did stop. It was the Crazy Horse School bus driver Dustin Randall that had the professionalism, compassion, and outstanding first aid skills that stopped and saved this young man's life. For this heroic feat, the Tribal Education Agency is requesting that the Ogallalasoo Tribe Council honor Mr. Dustin Randall of the Crazy Horse School for saving this young man's life. Can we get a round of applause, please? Next, I will read the certificate of appreciation. Certificate of appreciation. In honor of Dustin Randall, the Ogallalasoo Tribe holds in high esteem tribal members who exemplify qualities of courage, bravery, fortitude, and generosity. It is with great appreciation that the Ogallalasoo Tribe hereby recognizes Mr. Randall for his outstanding heroism. Mr. Randall had the professionalism, compassion, and outstanding first aid skills necessary to save the life of a young Lakota man. It is with gratitude that the Ogallalasoo Tribal Council honors Mr. Dustin Randall. Presented on this first day of June 2022, signed, Kevin Keller, Ogallalasoo Tribal President. And with that, we'd like the drum group to sing an honoring song for this man. And while they're singing, each and every one of you are invited to come and shake his hand. Ladies and gentlemen, can we get another round of applause, please, for this hero?
Can I get a picture of him with the president?
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you, Council, for...
Thank you, Chair. As Council Representative, Mr. Little Thunder, we congratulate the Dustin Randall family for his bravery. It couldn't have come at a better time. Now, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Little Thunder, did you want to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also would like to congratulate Mr. Randall for the great deed for the saving of Charles' life. Other than that, he would have, he would have died on this. For heroism, saving his life, great deed for the, for the young man. So motion to $500 for him.
Okay, so there's a motion, seconded by Councilman Youngman, oh, is it Councilman Hawkins?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, secretary, we call the vote on that honorary.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse. Ryan Jumpinggo, Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer, Junior.
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer, Junior.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston. Jackie Sears.
Oh, huh.
Michael Carlos, Senior.
Oh, yes.
Counsel that passes, four, two, not voting, thank you, Council. Thank you again, Vice Chair Canoyer, Junior, appreciate that. Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Chair, that was a yes for myself, also.
Oops, sorry, sorry, Councilman, so. Yeah, you got it, 17. And then, Councilman Steele, I see you got your hand up. Is this, is this for the last individual honoring, or is this another issue?
No, this is for the honoring we just did, you know, on behalf of, you know, my district. You know, times like this, it's okay. I mean, we do a good job honoring these individuals with the star quilts and these certificates. And, you know, on behalf of my district, you know, I would like to give this gentleman an eagle feather. And, you know, unfortunately, I'm not there because, you know, I'm dealing with my own family stuff right now. But I, you know, I'll, I'll give this eagle feather that I have, I'll give it to either Blaine or, or Mr. Hawkins. And I would really appreciate it if they could deliver it to the, to the, we chashah that we just honored on behalf of my district. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I appreciate, you know, your kindness, your kindness to stop and help this young man. You know, a lot of, from what we were told, cars didn't, they passed him up and they didn't help him. And, you know, without his efforts, this young man wouldn't, this young boy wouldn't be here today. So, you know, I think, you know, when we do these honorings, when it involves saving lives, you know, we need to remember, you know, the highest honor given was the eagle feather. And so on behalf of my district, I would like to give this man a eagle feather. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman, appreciate that, that gift, and make sure it gets to the recipient. So thank you again. Councilman Canoyer, do you want to?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. His next honoree was unable to attend in person. So I'd just like to read her certificate and a few, a few of her list of accomplishments. Certificate of appreciation. In honor of Gloria Coats Kistopoulos, Kit Sopolus. The Ogallalasoo Tribe holds in high esteem individuals who exemplify Lakota qualities of courage, bravery, fortitude, and generosity. The Ogallalasoo Tribe hereby expresses its appreciation to the hard work and dedication Ms. Coats Kistopoulos has demonstrated to the education of the children of the Ogallalasoo Tribe. Presented on this first day of June 2022, signed, President of the Ogallalasoo Tribe, Kevin Keller. And there's a list of Ms. Kistopoulos's achievements to include a graduate of Todd County Independent School Districts K through 12 through Mission. She has a bachelor's in science of education, elementary education. She has a master's in specialist in education administration. And her doctorate degree, her EDD with a 4.0 GPA and a dissertation named "The Relationship" that she also received. Her educational background, between 1972 and 1973, was Bellevue Public School System, Bellevue, Nebraska. 1973, 74 Bennett County School District, 74, 75 Shannon County School District, 7th and 8th Language Arts Department out of Batesland, South Dakota. Between 1975 and 2001, she endured military service. Between 2001 and 2002, she was the Assistant Principal at American Horse School in Allen, South Dakota. Between 2002 and 2006, she was the Principal at American Horse School in Allen, South Dakota. In 2007 to 2021, she was the Superintendent at American Horse School in Allen, South Dakota. Her accreditations are Elementary Teacher Accreditation K through 9, Elementary Teacher Accreditation K 8 for Virginia, Texas Teachers Exam Elementary Teacher Accreditation K through 8 for a lifetime, Elementary Teacher Accreditation and Language Arts Teacher Accreditation Preschool K through 8 Teacher Accreditation for South Dakota, Principal Certification Preschool through 8th Grade for South Dakota, Honorary Degree in Lakota Leadership at OLC, NCA CSI Advanced Ed Team Inspection Training Modules 1, 2, 3, and 4, Elementary Teacher Accreditation and Language Arts Teacher Accreditation Preschool K through 8, Reading Teacher Accreditation Preschool through 12 through South Dakota, Superintendent Certification. She was selected to attend the Virginia Turnaround Specialist Program held at Darden Business School at the University of Virginia in 2007. She was named the BI East Region Superintendent of the Year. She was recognized by the Ogallalasoo Tribal Education Committee for BI East Region Superintendent of the Year Award. She was a Renaissance Learning Accelerated Math and Reading Training Accreditation Team Member for Advanced Ed Inspection of Crazy Horse School. She has her SRA Reading Mastery Training Grades K through 3rd. She was part of the Board of Directors for Red Cloud Indian School from 2011 to 2017. She was Chairman of Red Cloud Indian Schools Education Committee 2012 to 2016. Board of Directors for OLC, appointed by the President John Yobird Steele in the 2014-2016 Administration. She was honored by the Ogallala Tribal Chairman John Steele as Outstanding Educator on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation in the fall of 2016. Board of Directors of Ogallala Lakota College, appointed by Ogallalasoo Tribal Education Committee 2016-2018, Member of OLC Personnel Committee, Ogallalasoo Tribal Council Approved Resolution for her to represent the tribe in the Bureau of Indian Education Negotiated Rulemaking Committee in 2017, approved by White House in 2018. And lastly, NCAA Accreditation Acknowledged American Horse School as the top elementary school in the state for its best education, educational, and business practices in educating children in the state of South Dakota. And with that, we would like to thank you, Dr. Gloria Coats Kistopoulos, for your service to American Horse School on behalf of the Ogallalasoo Tribe and Pass Creek District. Thank you. Maybe have a round of applause, please. Thank you, Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Appreciate all the honorings and all the information that you're able to come up with for both these individuals. And again, thank you for taking time to do this, and appreciate the families for being here and working with our schedules. You know, they, it's kind of crazy when people, different people show up and, and just thank the family for, for doing that, especially the Randall family. Because the, you know, that's a real heroic thing, what Mr. Randall did. And I think there's going to be another honoring here shortly from Councilman Carlo and others that's similar, and Councilwoman Spotted Bear. But again, it's just making sure that we take the time to do this and, and we're, we're just doing it in a good way. So again, hope you will. So Councilman Carlo, Councilman Spotted, I'm not sure who wants to, who's doing what, but.
Mr. Chairman, this, this award today and presentation will be done by members of the Pine Ridge District Representatives, and I reserve time to talk after they're done.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Go ahead, Councilwoman, Councilman, I'm not sure which one, how you want to proceed. Because I know that Mr. Saltes isn't here, but is, you know if he's online? He's online, okay. Okay, he had practice.
So I'd like to ask for the family of Teton Saltes to come up to the front. And while they're making their way to the front, I just want to note that this was brought to our attention a while ago. And I don't know if with this administration, we have been able to proclaim the heroism that has been happening that we don't recognize often. So I just want to say thank you to Mike Carlo for bringing this to our attention so we could bring it forward in law and order and get Mr. Saltes identified. And just to put this out there, it wasn't just himself, it was him and his family that took this heroic act. So I'll go into reading the proclamation. Presidential Proclamation, Ogallalasoo Tribe, Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. A proclamation by the President of the Ogallalasoo Tribe, Kevin Keller. On this first day of June 2022, we honor Teton Saltes, a member of the Ogallalasoo Tribe, who has demonstrated bravery, fortitude, and self-sacrifice throughout his life, and who, on February 22nd, 2022, risked his own life to rescue another tribal member, Charles New, Junior, from a house fire in Ogallala on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. Teton Saltes was born on May 4th, 1998, to Latisha Decory and Eric Sampson. He is the grandson of Lee and Yvonne Decory, and is brother to Adonis Saltes and Eric Sampson, Junior. He graduated from the Valley High School in New Mexico, where he played basketball and football. Mr. Saltes also played football at the University of New Mexico. He graduated with a degree in political science. He was drafted by the New York Jets of the National Football League in 2021, and by the Michigan Panthers of the United States Football League in 2022. He is an offensive lineman on the active roster of the Michigan Panthers. Mr. Saltes is currently continuing, continuing law student, is a continuing law student at the University of New Mexico. Mr. Saltes frequently returned home between training sessions to the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, following the footsteps of his grandmother. He is active in the Bear Project, a literacy and suicide crisis response organization for youth and families on the reservation. In 2020, he was awarded the Werful Trophy, an award given to collegiate football players with an exemplary community service record. Mr. Saltes mentors children with the Tree of Life on Pine Ridge during the summers and has worked with the Save the Children advocacy group. He always makes time to talk to teenagers, who are struggling during the peak of COVID-19. Mr. Saltes delivered food and water to members of his community and aided struggling businesses. On the blistering cold evening of February 22nd, 2022, Mr. Saltes was returning to Pine Ridge from Rapid City. Mr. Saltes spotted a burning house in Ogallala, South Dakota, and immediately responded. He stopped his vehicle, and upon realizing someone was trapped inside the burning house, Mr. Saltes ran into the flames. Mr. Saltes carried Charles New, Junior, out of the building, and with his mother, patted out flames on Mr. New's body and wrapped him in a blanket. Mr. Saltes went back into the building to make sure no one else was in danger before waiting with Mr. New for help to arrive. In recognition of Teton Saltes, and to show the Ogallalasoo Tribe's deep respect and appreciation for all that he has accomplished and the selfless acts of bravery and kindness he has performed, I hereby proclaim June 1, 2022, as Teton Saltes Honoring Day on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. And witness whereof, I have here on to set my hand this first day of June 2022. Kevin Keller, Tribal President, signed.
Well, thank you for that. That's a great honor today. I just want to speak on Teton a little bit. I had the honor to coach him as a kid. And growing up, he was a tough, driven kid from what I, from what I experienced. And I just want to say thank you to the family. You guys are doing a great job raising this young man, and I look forward to him being a future leader, coming to, coming back to our people. I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you. We have a star quilt on its way, and we did try to have Mr. Saltes online because he wanted to give his appreciation. But I asked the drum group to, oh, correction. So Mike has a few words, and Tyler has a few words.
Thank you. You know, today, not only is it a privilege and a pride that we as members of the Tribal Council, but as a relative, that I get to speak in his behalf. You know, if you look at the pictures, you know, how many other individuals would risk their life to save an individual? I mean, this whole house is on fire. I mean, for him to go in there and do the heroics that he did, I mean, that's above and beyond the call of duty. You know, I totally appreciate what he's done, the accomplishments that he's done in his life to this time. I'm going to challenge my nephew to go out into the professional field that he's in today and try to bring about some of the professional athletes back here to our reservation and help be mentors to our young men and our young women. You know, and not only am I asking him to do that because of the meth problem that we have on our reservation today, in closing, I want him to know that he is an ambassador to Indian country.
Thank you. What Teton has done for the family of, and that's where both myself and Councilman Youngman represent, the family is very thankful for what he's done to bring the survivor out of that fire. That fire was, was a total loss to the home, and the family is still displaced today. But... But on behalf of myself. And Councilman Youngman and the Ogallala District and the family of Charles New. We'd like to say thank you to the family, to Teton for what he's done. And, uh, it's a heartfelt thank you. You know, we, we don't want to lose anybody tragically like that. And it was just. By chance that we had a, a young man and his family driving through and took the initiative to stop. And that's the, that's extraordinary thing today is what I'm listening to is we listened to a bus driver who stopped to save a young man's life. And today, just moments later, we're listening and seeing the pictures of the family saving the gentleman from his, uh, uh, home engulfed in flames. And it's people like that who make changes. It's people like that who inspire and it's people like that who bring change. So with that, thank you on behalf of both Councilman Youngman and I and the family and as well as Ogallala District.
Thank, thank you, guys. Um, as Teton's grandma, we, and grandpa, we two are very proud and we're thankful that you guys take the time. Mike and Julie and John and George, you, you've taken the time to, to pause. And to honor and to, and to, and it is celebrating life. But every time we do something, we need to take time to pause like we honor the bus driver. Because I looked at him and I thought, you know, his face is the first face those little kids see when they get on the bus. So that bus driver can make that kid's day or they can burn the kid's day. And when he's happy and he's smiling, and I know the young man, he's always smiling. So, you know, you, you did a really good job, you know, an honorable thing to do that for him. When Teton was bringing the young man out from, and they were patting him and he was mumbling. And Teton just kept telling him, you're going to be okay, you're going to be okay. And as Teton got a blanket from the truck and they wrapped him and he was carrying him for the. I just kept hearing over and over what that young man was saying to Teton. Please don't let me die. Please don't let me die. And Teton said, you're not going to die, buddy. We got you. You're not going to die. And then I got to thinking about our, all of our young kids out there. That the little things that we can do, because sometimes they look at us with that same look, you know? Please help me. Don't let anything happen to me. So again, thank you, guys, and, um. And Teton was on for the first, he got on at 11:06 and he, uh, break time and then he had to go to practice, so. But he, he said, thank you, guys, very much, and he'll probably see you when he gets a break.
Um, Councilman Steele, and then I think we're going to go to honoring song for, uh, Teton and the family. So, uh, go ahead, Councilman Steele.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, um, watching this young man grow up, you know, this, this, this don't surprise me with his actions because. That's how he was raised by his grandma, grandpa and his mom, you know, really good family. And, you know, once again, I just want to say on behalf of the Wundenee District, you know, I would like to. Give my nephew an eagle feather and honor him in that way. And, you know, I know I'll be seeing him in the, the, the near future here because he's always around, so. No, I'll, I'll take it upon myself to, to give my nephew that eagle feather, but I just want to say thank you to Auntie Tiny. Um, and Uncle Lee there, you know, thank you guys for raising good kids, good boys. And for them to be such good role models to the rest of our kids. I just want to say that much, but. You know, Auntie, I want you to know I love you and I appreciate all the work that, that you do for the people. Um, thank you, Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Um, so far, our, uh, esteemed singers will, uh, give us a song that we could. Um, thank you to our singers. Appreciate all of you. Thank you for hanging tough with us all day, you know? And, uh, hopefully you got good lunch with us. So we appreciate your, your, all your songs today. Wopila. Uh, Councilwoman Carlo?
Thank you, Chairman. You know, um, I too at this time would like to give a big thank you to, um, Teton. And also to Tiny and Lee. And we ask that if, um, Tiny and Lee could be patient for a little bit here, we do have a, we apologize, but we do have a star quilt on its way out. And I, at this time, I'd like to make a motion for $500 for Teton.
Okay. Uh, motion by Councilwoman Carlo, second by Councilwoman Dreamer and Councilwoman Spotted Bear. Uh, any discussion on that? Hearing none. Secretary called a vote on that honorium?
Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Lane Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse? Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer, Jr.?
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Jr.?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Jean Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, Jr.?
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Jackie Sears?
Oh, huh.
Michael Carlos, Senior?
Oh, yes.
Garfield Still?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Uh, council that passes 15 yes to not voting. Um, thank you, Council. So I think that that's it for the honorings for, for the, today. Um, I don't see any others, but again, thank you, Council, and thank you again to our singers. Um, for, for being here with us and, um, and, uh, again, this is a really good thing that we do for our members and. And it's a good way for people to learn about, you know, what, what's happening in the community, but also just honoring those heroics, you know, what, what's going on, so. Um, so with that, we'll, uh, I think there's a two-thirds item from HHS. Is that correct? Uh, okay. Um, so, uh, so yesterday, when we were doing that two-thirds items, this one got left out. Uh, for whatever reason, but, um, Chairman Jumping Eagle, I'll turn it over to you.
Chair, make a motion to open the agenda.
Um, there's a motion to open the agenda. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Youngman to open the agenda. Um, any discussion on that? Hearing none. We're seeing none online. Um, Secretary, we call a vote to open the agenda. And this is a two-thirds vote, correct? Yeah, two-thirds vote.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Wayne Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse? Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer, Jr.?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Jr.?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Jean Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, Jr.?
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Jackie Sears?
Oh, huh.
Michael Carlos, Senior? Garfield Still?
Yes.
Uh, council that passes 15 yes to not voting. Uh, uh, Chairman, uh, Jumping Eagle?
So it's a resolution of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council, supporting Ogallala, Dakota Air Rescue. To be given first priority on air rescue flights by the Pine Ridge Service Unit Indian House Service. Motion to two-thirds.
Okay. Uh, motion by Chairman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilwoman Carlo. Uh, any discussion on this item? Hearing none or seeing none online or in person. Secretary, we call a vote. And this is a two-thirds vote? So, yeah, okay, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Lane Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse? Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer, Jr.? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Jr.?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Jean Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, Jr.?
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, huh.
Michael Carlos, Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yes.
Uh, council that passes 16 yes, we're not voting. Thank you, Council. Um, is there a motion to close the agenda? Motion by Councilman Yellowboy. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Jumping Eagle to close the agenda. Um, any discussion on that? Hearing or seeing that online or in person. Secretary, we call the vote, please. Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Lane Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse? Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer, Jr.? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Jr.?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Jean Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, Jr.?
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, huh.
Michael Carlos, Senior? Garfield Still?
Yep.
16, one not voting. Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you, Council. Uh, so that motion carries. Um, so we're, uh, I think we're reverting back to, is, uh, Chairwoman Whitehorse on by any chance? Cause we had.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Chairwoman, uh, is, is your item ready to present?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Uh, go ahead, Chairwoman.
Um, Stacy, can you read that? And it's just to be read as is.
Okay. Resolution of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe and Unincorporated Tribe. Resolution of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe approving the use of Roma Settlement Funds for Law Enforcement Services for Ogallala Sioux Tribe. For fiscal year 2022, services in the amount of $3,527,000. Whereas the Ogallala Sioux Tribe organized under Section 16 of the Indian Reorganization Act of 1934, 25 U.S.C., subsection 5123. By adopting the federally approved constitution and bylaws. And under Article 3 of the Tribal Constitution, the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article 4, Sections 1F, 1K, 1M, and 1W of the Tribal Constitution empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe. Protect and preserve the property of the tribe and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the tribe and its members. And whereas the Ogallala Sioux Tribe Law and Order Committee is a standing committee of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe. And whereas the Ogallala Sioux Tribe Law and Order Committee did meet on the 4th of May, 2022 with the Quorum President and did approve this resolution. For the presentation to the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council for their action. And whereas the OST Department Public Safety DPS entered into contract negotiations with the Bureau of Indian Affairs. For the FY 2022 PL 93638 contract and have not come up, come to an agreement. OST DPS will continue to provide law enforcement services until a contract is agreed upon by both parties. And whereas the OST DPS has requested the funding from the BIA for the FY 2022 contract term. Once the funding, funding is provided, this amount, $3,527,000 will be reimbursed. And whereas the OST Department of Public Safety wishes to utilize Roma Settlement Funds until the BIA provides the funding. And whereas the OST Law and Order Committee has reviewed and recommends to Tribal Council to approve and use of. Roma Settlement Funds in the amount of $3,527,000. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby approve the use of Roma Settlement Funds by OST Department of Public Safety. To conduct law enforcement services for FY 2022 in the amount of $3,527,000. Certification.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Chairwoman, second by Vice Chair Yellowboy, Councilman Jumping Eagle and Councilman Hawkins. Uh, any discussion on this? Hearing or seeing done online or in person? Secretary, we call a vote, please. Thank you. And Councilman Canoyer, Jr. On this, on the second two.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Lane Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer, Jr.?
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yeah.
Wendell Youngman, Jr.?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Jean Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, Jr.?
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Jackie Sears?
Oh, huh. Ah, I'm sorry about that. Ha.
Thank you. Thank you, Sonia. Michael Carlos, Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you, council. That passes the unanimous seventeen-four zero against. And I believe that concludes all the items for finance committees. Is that correct, Chairwoman?
Yes, it is. Mister President, I'd like to request that you follow up and find out why our programs have not received their funding. With either whoever the regional director is right now, they change all the time, so.
Okay. I can, I'll do that as soon as this meeting is done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So that, moving on to, I believe, land committee. Chairman Carlo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I read the resolution, I have Mr. Red Cloud here if there would be any questions. And it is the belief not only of Mr. Red Cloud but of the land committee. That the growth of his program is being stagnated because it's not a standalone program. So, this is the reason why we're bringing us here and the opportunities that are out there in grants and different contracts would totally make his program a much better and effective program. Resolution of Oglala Sioux Tribal Council, the Oglala Sioux Tribe approving the Oglala Sioux Tribe Water Resource Program to operate as a separate program. And removing the Oglala Sioux Tribe Water Resource Program from supervision by the Oglala Sioux Tribe Natural Resource Program. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five in accordance with subsection sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection five-one-two-three. And under Article three of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe Land and Natural Resource Committee is a standing committee of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe Land and Natural Resource Committee with the quorum present did meet on the fifth day of May, twenty twenty-two and did approve, adopt this resolution. For presentation to Oglala Sioux Tribal Council. Whereas ordinance number seventy-nine dash one-two did create the Oglala Sioux Tribe Natural Resource Regulatory Agency. And whereas the OST Water Resource Department was created by resolution eighty-nine dash one-one-six. And whereas the OST Water Resource Department is under the supervision of the OST Natural Resource Regulatory Agency. And whereas portion of the funds that the OST Water Resource Department receives is designated to help pay the salaries of the OST Natural Resource Agency Coordinator and Secretary. And the OST Land and Natural Resource Committee is aware that these salaries will be affected by the passage of this resolution. And whereas the OST Land and Natural Resource Committee believes that the functions of the OST Water Resource Department could be more effectively performed. If the Water Resource Department was no longer under the supervision of the OST Natural Resource Agency. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribe based upon the recommendations of the OST Land and Natural Resource Committee. Does hereby approve the Oglala Sioux Tribe Water Resource Program to operate as a separate program and removing the Oglala Sioux. Water program from under the supervision of the OST Natural Resource Program. Yet further resolve that the President Oglala Sioux Tribe or the Vice President Oglala Sioux Tribe in his absence or of the OST President is directed to sign this resolution. Certification, motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second by Councilwoman Spotted Bear. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing or seeing none online or in person? Secretary, we call a vote.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Lane Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer, Junior?
Out.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo? George Dreamer, Junior?
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
David Poyer? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Michael Carlos, Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yes.
Council that motion passes seventeen yes, two not voting. Thank you, council. Chairman, your next one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank the council. The second resolution that we have has been resolved. And it just took action of the district of Lake Creek to appoint. Mister Dylan to that allocation committee. Next resolution. Ordinance of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. Of the Oglala Sioux Tribe strictly prohibiting Charles Butch Diven and his family for leasing from, should be from leasing. Any tribal land upon the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation and mandating the Bureau of Indian Affairs to comply with this ordinance. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection five-one-two-three. And under Article three of the Oglala Sioux Tribe's constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribe Council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe Land and Natural Resource Committee is a standing committee of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council. Who did meet on the second day of May, twenty twenty-two with the quorum present and did adopt this ordinance and did forward it to the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council for their action. And whereas the executive committee of the Oglala Sioux Tribe did pass resolution number oh-one-dash-nine-nine XB entitled. Resolution of the Executive Committee of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. Directing the Bureau of Indian Affairs to cancel any all grazing permits and our pasture and farm leases of Oglala Sioux tribal lands permitted. And are leased by Frank Diven, Charles Butch Diven, Scott Diven, and their immediate families. Which resolution did impose a ban on leasing of tribal lands to them upon the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. And whereas the resolution number oh-one-dash-nine-nine XB was based upon fact that Charles Butch Diven was convicted and was imprisoned for possession of cattle that did not belong to him. And whereas the conviction was a violation of the OST Grazing Code, ordinance number ninety-five-dash-oh-six, section sixteen. In effect at the time, which states theft of livestock by permittee shall subject the permittee to cancellation. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe intends to take action which will reinforce the ban as set forth in resolution number oh-one-dash-nine-nine XB. Now therefore be it ordained that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council does based upon the recommendations of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. Land and Natural Resource Committee hereby declares that Butch Diven and his extended family are strictly prohibited from leasing lands upon the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. Be it further ordained that no individual or entity shall enter into an agreement either or or written to pasture Butch. Charles Butch Diven or his extended family's livestock upon the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. Be it further ordained that under this ordinance, extended family shall have the meaning of wife, children, brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles, nephews, nieces, parents, and step. Half and in-laws of same degree included. Be it further ordained that any and all livestock owned by the Diven family found within the exterior boundaries of the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. Pursuant to any pasturing agreement in violation of this ordinance shall be subject to impalement, care, and removal from the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. Be it further ordained that any person or entity who has a lease with the Oglala Sioux Tribe and who violates this ordinance shall have their lease terminated. And shall be prohibited from entering into land lease for ten years. Be it further ordained that the Bureau of Indian Affairs is mandated to comply with this ordinance certification, motion to approve.
Motion to approve is your second, a second by Councilman Canoyer, Junior. And Councilman Dreamer. Is there any discussion on this?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Sears, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a question, just to maybe clarify the, if this is supposed to be an ordinance or a resolution? Because isn't an ordinance a law? So is that a law being passed or just get that clarified by the attorney?
Chairman, do you?
Our attorney thought it should be an ordinance, that's why it was read that way.
Correct, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Hearing or seeing none? Secretary, we call a vote, please. Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Lane Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer, Junior?
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, Junior?
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Michael Carlos, Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yep.
Council that motion passes seventeen-four zero against. Thank you, council. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank the council for support of our resolution and our ordinance. And that'll be it for land committee.
Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate all the work of land committee and, you know, all the resolutions you brought forward today. So, I think we're done with the regular item reports, but we're going to go to the two-thirds now. So, I think, who've we got first? HHS, Chairman Jumping Eagle?
Thank you, Chair. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council approving Doug O'Brien Contracting's Contract Change Order number four to make a lump sum payment for the individual scattered sites contract for homes on the Pine Ridge Reservation. PR two thousand nineteen dash INDWS dash one. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe has adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC fifty-one, twenty-three. And under Article three of the constitution, the tribal council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas the tribal constitution authorizes the tribal council in Article four, section one A to negotiate with the federal government on behalf of the tribe in section one F to manage all economic affairs and enterprises of the tribe. And section one G to appropriate for public purposes of the tribe any available tribal council funds. And in section one W to protect and promote the health and general welfare of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council has authority to approve contracts and change orders. And whereas the Health and Human Services Committee, HHS Committee, is a standing committee of the tribal council that oversees the Indian House Service. IHS Martin sanitation facilities, construction contracts. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe's water and sewer company requires the approval of a change order and contract for a one-time lump, lump sum payment for the replacement. Of the water meter vault and connection of North Martin Tribal Housing to City of Martin Water. Between the Oglala Sioux Tribe and Doug O'Brien Contracting. Change order number four will increase contract PR two thousand nineteen dash INDWS dash one total cost by one hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. From three million, two hundred and thirty-one dollars. Three million, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety cents to three million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety cents. No additional time is requested. And whereas on May tenth, twenty twenty-two, the Oglala Sioux Tribe Health and Human Services Committee met during regular session. And approved the change order for a one-time lump sum payment for the replacement of the water meter vault and connection of North Martin Tribal Housing to City of Martin Water. Change order number one. Change order number four will increase contract PR two thousand nineteen in I dash INDWS dash one total cost by one hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. From three million, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety cents to three million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety cents. No additional time is requested. Now, therefore be it resolved that the tribal council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe has voted to approve the contract change order for Doug O'Brien Contracting. For a one-time lump sum payment for the replacement of the water meter vault and connection of North Martin Tribal Housing to City of Martin Water for the individual scattered sites contract. PR two thousand nineteen dash INDWS dash one. And be it further resolved, the tribal president or in his absence, the vice president is hereby authorized to sign any documents necessary to execute contract change order number four. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, second by Councilwoman Carlo. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing or seeing none? Secretary, we call a vote, please. Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior? Lane Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer, Junior?
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, Junior? Jillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Michael Carlos, Senior? Garfield Still?
Yes.
Council that motion passes fifteen yes, two not voting. Thank you, council. Chairman, your next one.
Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council approving municipal pipe tool company LLC, LLC's Contract Change Order number five to add work for the construction. Of the Pine Ridge Sewer Lining Phase One Contract PR two thousand twenty-one dash CS dash three. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe has adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC fifty-one, twenty-three. And under Article three of the constitution, the tribal council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas the tribal constitution authorizes the tribal council in Article four, section one A to negotiate with the federal government on behalf of the tribe. And section one F to manage all economic affairs and enterprises of the tribe. And section one G to appropriate for public purposes of the tribe any available tribal council funds and in section one W to protect and promote the health and general welfare of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council has the authority to approve contracts and change orders. And whereas the Health and Human Services Committee, HHS Committee, is a standing committee of the tribal council that oversees the Indian House Service. IHS Martin sanitation facilities, construction contracts. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe's water and sewer company requires the approval of a change order and contract modification to add additional work to contract PR two thousand twenty-one dash CS dash three between the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And municipal pipe tool company LLC. And whereas on May tenth, twenty twenty-two, the Oglala Sioux Tribe Health and Human Services Committee met during regular session and approved the change order to add work to the contract. Change order number five will decrease contract PR two thousand twenty-one dash CS dash three by a total of twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and four dollars and eighty-seven cents. From one million, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-six cents to one million, one hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. No additional time is requested. Now therefore be it resolved that the tribal council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe has voted to approve the contract change order for municipal pipe tool company LLC. the Contract Change Order for municipal pipe tool company LLC to add work to the Pine Ridge Sewer Lining Phase One Contract. PR two thousand twenty one dash CS dash three and decrease the contract total by twenty nine thousand six hundred and four dollars and eighty seven cents from one million one hundred and thirty nine thousand four hundred and ninety two dollars and sixty six cents to one million one hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and eighty seven dollars and seventy nine cents. And be it further resolved, the tribal president or in his absence, the vice president is hereby authorized to sign any documents necessary to execute Contract Change Order Number Five. Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, motion to approve, second by Councilwoman Carlo and Councilwoman Spotted Bear. Is there further discussion? Hearing or seeing none, Secretary, we call a vote, please, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior? Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Kenoyer Junior?
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy? Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, huh.
Michael Carlos Senior? Garfield Still?
Yes.
Uh, counsel, that passed sixteen yes, one not voting, thank you, counsel. Uh, Chairman, uh, do you have any more items? One more, okay, I speak Chairman.
Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council, the Oglala Sioux Tribe um, to supporting Oglala Lakota Air Rescue to be given first priority on air rescue flights by the Pine Ridge Service Unit Indian House Service. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe organized under section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty five thirty four twenty five USC subsection fifty one twenty three by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws, and under article three of the tribal constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas article four, section one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the tribal council to manage the economic affairs and enterprises of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas the Pine Ridge Service Unit Indian House Service frequently utilizes air ambulance services to transport tribal members for emergencies and other healthcare needs. And whereas the Oglala Lakota Air Rescue provides medical flight services for the Oglala Sioux Tribe and is located on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation and is able to respond to calls in a more timely manner than other flight teams in the surrounding area. And whereas the OST Health and Human Services Committee supports the Oglala Lakota Air Rescue should be given priority priority for medical flights through the Pine Ridge Service Unit Indian House Service. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby support the Oglala Lakota Air Rescue as the first priority call for healthcare emergency response transports and other healthcare services transportation by the Pine Ridge Service Unit Indian House Service. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, your second, second by Councilman Youngman, Councilman Dreamer. Uh, is there any discussion on this item? Hearing or seeing none, Secretary, we call, or, uh, Councilwoman Sears, go ahead.
Yeah, do we have, um, anybody online to, you know, from IHS to, um, ask a question?
Um, Dr. Jumping Eagle, are you, are you, is she on? No. Um, I don't think so, not at this time, Councilwoman. Uh, but I know that Dr. Jumping Eagle does give a report towards the end if she gets on.
Yeah, because I think we got a list, uh, a short list there, but I'd like to see, um, a compiled list from the time of OLR's inception into the air ambulance, you know, to, to see what's really going on. Is it just those calls right there that we have? I think there's, uh, just from a, uh, a couple weeks span there, so. That's why I wanted to have a question from IHS for them.
Okay, uh, thank counsel, yeah, we can do that whenever, uh, Dr. Jumping Eagle's on, if she gets on, I didn't hear her back, but um, we'll make a note, um, so I got Councilwoman Whitehorse and then Councilwoman Steele.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, you know, I, I think it's time to go above Pine Ridge Service Unit now. Because we have done this a few times and there is always one excuse after another. So I think we need to go above Pine Ridge. I don't know how, um, accepting or willing to work with us Aberdeen will be, but maybe we even need to go above them. Because this, this, um, business is half-owned or fifty one percent owned by the districts. And we should be utilizing them. They provide the same service as the other, um, the other, the other businesses that are utilized, that's basically what it is, it's a business, that are utilized in the area. And the only difference is that we're right there. OLR is right there, so they have a faster response time. So I, I think that it's time to go above Pine Ridge now and take it to Aberdeen, if they don't respond there, then take it to DC. Because they should be utilizing what we have. Right now, they're not following the Bi-Indian. Because they should, we, this program is there. And they're not even, they, they don't utilize it as much as they could. So I don't know if that needs to be a motion or, or how we can do that. But I think we need to take it higher now. And I think maybe to do that, we should gather our previous resolutions and the responses that we received from the previous service unit directors and Dr. Jumping Eagle. Because if we have it, they should be utilizing it. And they're not. Because they provide service to our people. And they should be providing the most expedient, safest service possible. Rather than, I think at one point she said they had a list and they went around, or they, they followed that list. Took turns. But what is the point of having the Bi-Indian Federal Act when it's not going to be utilized by a federal program? So do I need to make a motion after this?
Uh, that's your prerogative, uh, Councilwoman.
Well, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, Councilman Steele?
Thank you, Chairman, you know, um, Councilwoman Cora hit on a lot of good points. Um, I think, um, I think statistics shouldn't matter right now, I mean, what should matter is that our lives are at stake each and every time a, a air li- air ambulance is requested. And we're still waiting for a outside company to come in when we have our own, that should be at the forefront rather than wanting to see the statistics. But Mr. Wade Black is online also, if anyone had questions for him. But, you know, like I said, you know, we, we lost our lives. And due to, um, and I, I'll say, you know, waiting on, on a air, air ambulance. You know, once an air ambulance is requested, that tells us that we don't have the adequate care at our facility and, and they need to be somewhere else, but we play the game of wanting to please someone else, and, and that really hurts us, so. You know, I, 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 I really wish we would take it to another level, um. And I know Wade ha- Wade was, Wade mentioned to me that they, they possibly have a meeting set up. But, uh, if Wade's on the line, I'd like to yield him some time, Mr. Chair.
Um, okay, go ahead, Mr. Black.
Um, Mr. Chairman and, and council leaders, um, thank you, um, can everybody hear me okay?
Uh, yeah, we can hear you, Mr. Black.
Okay, um, yes, we, um, I guess since February, we have been working with IHS out of Aberdeen, both with, um, Dan Davis. And then, um, and we've shared all of the data as far as all flight information since the inception of OLR, um, uh, which began in July of two thousand nineteen. Um, and, um, they have reviewed that data and he actually acknowledged that, uh, our data, um, was accurate data. And so he didn't dispute any of that, and so of all the flights that we've done, um, we've, uh, I mean, we've been called on, um, actually less than thirty percent of the flights, I think the data, the data shows it's been about, it's around twenty eight percent. Um, as everyone knows, uh, we are the only service that's based on the reservation, I mean, our whole mission and why we were created was to serve the tribe and its members, and, um, for some reason, I, and, and, uh, you know, it just, it, it doesn't make sense, and, uh, we had a call actually with, uh, uh, Joe Amiot, uh, joined us, um, on Friday as well, and we had a long discussion about just why, you know, we weren't being called, and, um, and even Joe acknowledged, you know, he didn't really understand what was going on, he said that he himself wanted to be able to review the data, which again pushes the timeline further down the road. Um, we had sent a letter that I believe, um, HHS leadership along with President Keller, um, were copied on, uh, straight to Washington, uh, to, um, IHS, I guess, uh, early last week. Um, also copied, um, the senators, um, offices, uh, con- congressman. Um, and then also tribal representative, uh, delegate for, for the White House along with, uh, some other congressional leaders, and, um, we have had response from the letter as far as, and what the letter stated is, is what, you know, basically what our mission is, and, and we're here, you know, what we're here to do. And why we haven't been called, you know, get first call, um, by IHS, um, is, you know, it just doesn't make sense, and so we asked for, we've been asked for a dialogue to be able to have a discussion, um, to see what, to try to work through this, we do not want to be adversarial in any way, obviously, because, you know, we're here, we just want to serve, we just want to do our job and serve the tribe. Um, we don't, you know, we don't want to battle with anybody, but, you know, this is just hard enough as it is doing what we do. Um, so we've had dialogue, um, early this week with Senator Thiem's office and staff from both Washington and, um, and, um, they're in, um, Rapid City, and then we also have a call uh, next week with Senator Round's office, and I think both of the, the senator's office would like to have a call. I think next week with IHS and, and Washington, different, uh, IHS leaders, and to talk through this, and we've shared all the data, the same data that we shared with IHS. Um, they have all of the same information, uh, so that they know what's going on as long, as well as, uh, the two previous tribal resolutions, uh, that were passed, um, so, um, we're asking for, you know, we appreciate, you know, this third resolution, I really appreciate the support in getting this approved, but we, I think, and I agree with, um, everyone who's spoken before that, uh, it would be good, uh, for us to have the conversation even at the Washington level, because I think that, um, even Aberdeen is, is trying to delay, or not really wanting to respond, uh, to our request. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Black, for that update and that perspective, and I did receive the email um, that, that you sent around last week to, uh, our congressional members. Um, Councilman Poyer, I see you have your hand up.
Yes. I agree with, uh, Cora. You know, it's getting, uh, kind of old passing these resolutions. Uh, you know, the boy that was shot at uh, Perky Pine at the Aldory Complex? Maybe he would have been alive today, because they argued over who, what, uh, system they was gonna use uh, to get that boy to Monument Health. You know, and it's unfortunate that we have to pass numerous resolutions to, uh, I guess get anything done, and by passing this resolution isn't a guarantee that we're even gonna get anything. But I agree with Cora, something has to be done at the higher level, because nothing's happening locally or even in Aberdeen. And that's why I always supported to close Aberdeen. Because they don't do nothing for us. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Uh, additional questions or comments? I know that there's gonna be a pending motion after this from Councilwoman Whitehorse, um. And also hopefully that question will be resolved, um, if, if and when, uh, Dr. Jumping Eagle will be on at a report. Um, any more questions, seeing none, uh, Secretary, you call the vote, please, on this resolution?
Wesley Hawkins Senior? Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Kenoyer Junior?
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear? Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Not voting.
Jackie Sears?
Not voting at this time.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yes.
Uh, counsel, that motion passes fourteen yes, three not voting, thank you, counsel. And, uh, before I go to Councilwoman Whitehorse, um, uh, Councilman Hawkins was excused, uh, two, two o'clock, so, thank you. Um, Councilwoman Whitehorse, I know that you stated you want to make a motion.
Yes, my, my motion will be to take this resolution, the previous resolution, and the stat beyond Pine Ridge Service Unit and Aberdeen Area Regional Office and, or Area Office, and take it to DC, to our congressionals and to IHS to make them aware of what is going on. I think we need to have a meeting with them, either invite them down or go there to make sure that they know what our concern is, and they know that we do have services available here that are not being utilized by the local service unit.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilwoman, and do you want to include Secretary Becerra in that, HHS?
Yes. And also, um, maybe Deb Holland as well.
Okay. Um, so there's a motion made, um, is there a second? Second by Councilman Youngman. Uh, any discussion on this motion? Hearing or seeing none online or in person, Secretary, we call the vote, please?
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Kenoyer Junior?
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Ah.
Ja- Jackie Sears.
Not voting.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
Uh, council, that passes fourteen yes, two not voting, thank you, council. Um, so I believe that concludes all the items for H H S, alright, thank you, uh, Councilman, or Chairman Jumping Eagle. Uh, so moving on to, I think we're on the last issue. Um, Law and Order, well, we did that yesterday, we were at the two thirds. Oh, you went there. Oh, we have to vote on that, okay, oh, I already agreed on that, so, okay. Um, so the next one, I g- I guess I can kind of help, uh, preface it, um. So the Law and Order Committee asked for a special council meeting on June thirteenth to deal with the election code. Um, and both, uh, Chairman Watkins and Vice Chair Rodriguez aren't here. Um, but they did ask for that, so is there any discussion or a motion to approve that? Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman Ironclad to approve a special council meeting on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Um, further discussion? Hearing or seeing none, Secretary, we call the vote to two thirds of that, that meeting?
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Jean Carlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Jackie Sears.
Oh huh.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
Uh, council, that passes fifteen yes and one not voting, thank you, council. Uh, so that will conclude the Law and Order Committee, uh, moving on. I believe we have the, I was, uh, Mr. Shane Coombs? Um, who, who, uh?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, go ahead, Councilman, yeah, what?
I believe that was brought from Councilman Steele. But I, I think there's some issues that we probably should discuss in executive on that, being that there's some information that was brought this morning by, uh, Councilwoman Carlo.
So, um, is there, is there a motion to go into executive? Motion by Councilman Carlo, is there a second? Second by Councilman Youngman to go into executive, um. Any dis- well, yeah, any discussion on this? Seeing or hearing none, Secretary, we call the vote for executive.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Jean Carlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Jackie Sears.
Oh huh.
Michael Carlos Senior. Garfield Steele.
Uh, council, that passes fifteen yes, one not voting. Uh, council, go ahead and take a break for maybe, uh, ten minutes, and then we'll come back and, uh, we'll be in executive, so, and we'll get the people that don't need to be in, um, we'll.